Don told her I was in action.
Almost up.
At six o'clock, please rest for the play.
All right. Bunch of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, April 1st. Happy April Fool's Day. Nothing we're doing tonight is a joke, though, so. We do have our budget hearing scheduled, but first, there's a matter I'd like to address. Sometimes in the village, we need to pause and recognize people who do things for the village that should be appreciated. And tonight, we have an individual who has worked in the village since 2006 and recently retired from Audio Video, which is just across the way. And one day shortly after joining the board, I noticed him doing some community service, picking up litter on each side of Broadway, and I needed to know why. And so I asked, I stopped him and I asked him, and he said he's walking that way anyway, and so he might as well do something good while he's going for a walk. So I would just like to give a community service award and a proclamation to Mr. Thomas M. Leonard. Let me read this. Proclamation and award for community service. Whereas Thomas M. Leonard was hired by Audio Video Corporation, a Manans-based business, as a sales support specialist on November 6, 2006, and has officially retired on March 29, 2024. Whereas Tom's role at ABC is to support the sales team in multiple fashions. Tom's day can include meetings with manufacturer partners, suppliers, and clients, provide the sales team with product specifications, pricing, equipment recommendations, bids, quotations for the sales team, meetings with customers who walk into the Manans office, sometimes it's Donna and myself, assist sales personnel with equipment demonstrations and training. Tom will be greatly missed and is considered a jack-of-all-trades when it comes to his position at Audio Video Corporation. And whereas Tom has always been an active steward of the environment, in addition to his daily Manans lunch breaks, walks, which include helping to remove and dispose of debris along both sides of Broadway and various streets in between, Tom utilizes solar panels at his residence to reduce his carbon footprint and drives an electric motorcycle to work all four seasons of New York. Whereas the Village of Manans, the Board of Trustees, the Department of Public Works, the Manans Police Department, thank Thomas M. Leonard for his dedication and volunteerism, keeping the Village of Manans clean for all enjoy, to enjoy. Therefore, in witness thereof, I, Brian Morris, Mayor of the Village of Manans, as chairperson of the Board of Trustees, wish Thomas M. Leonard a healthy, happy retirement and do hereby present this proclamation and award for community service on this day.
Thank you, Tom.
Congratulations.
I hope you have somewhere else where you can pick up litter.
I just walked three miles today through the town of Skodak doing the same thing.
Okay, you're welcome back here anytime. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want to. Good to see you all.
Thank you.
All right, so tonight, we're going to hop into a presentation of the proposed budget for 2024-25. I'm going to do a little bit of it to try and talk about some of the ins and outs of the budget this year, and then we're going to allow the board members to ask any questions or comment, and then the public. Fair enough?
Yep, I have to read the notice.
Go ahead.
Notice hereby given pursuant to village law that preliminary budget of the Village of Manans for the fiscal year beginning June 1st, 2023, and ending May 31st, 2024. I said 24 on this. So where were we?
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, and May 31st, 2024, has been duly filed. Further take notice of public care will be conducted at 2:50 Broadway, Manans, New York, at Cent Village on Monday, April 1st, 2024, at 6:00 PM by the Village Board and Trustees, the Village may have considered a preliminary budget, which, by comments and suggestions of the residents, growth of such budget will be enacted and received.
Okay, Don, can you pull up?
Yes. We're gonna have to, oh, sure, I have this all set up to go, and there it is. Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm under a chair.
There we go. Okay, so let's start with the good news. The good news this year, we had a change in our assessed property total. It was up $9.6 million from the year before. Part of that increase, in fact, I think most of it, was the start of the One Broadway property, the opening lots, to start paying their fair share of their 485B agreement. So that resulted in the majority of that coming on. The next three years, I think, is when that finishes up. So next year should be an additional increase of relatively the same size, because it was a seven-year, I believe it was a seven-year pilot, and then a three-year add-on. You want to go to the next slide? So here's basically the breakdown of where our revenues come from. You can see our property taxes account for nearly half of all of the revenue that we earn here to pay the bills at the village. Non-property tax items include cannabis. They include sales tax. Fines and forfeitures are money that we get from the court. Public safety is fire inspections, building permits, that type of public safety money. State aid is AIM and chips, correct?
Aims and chips and any other state aid we get, which is as much, believe me.
And then 11.9% is rollover money from our reserves. Over to the next slide. Okay, I know it might be a little challenging to see. So basically, what I did is I created a spreadsheet which showed from last year what are the additions and what are the subtractions that resulted in us needing to increase taxes 2.51%. So the $9.6 million of additional property that came onto the assessment rule, that times last year's tax rate earned us $86,337. The cannabis revenue that we have put in the budget for this year is $75,000. The utilities receipt tax, which was new in last year's budget, so not in last year's budget, but is in this year's budget, is estimated to be $75,000. We have been working to increase the court fines that we collect for criminal penalties, and we have increased that amount from last year to this year by $25,000. And there is an estimate of a slight decrease in mortgage tax as there are fewer properties that are out for sale. On the expense side, 62% of the village budget is related or directly from salaries. That's salaries plus salaries and benefits, retirements, social security, et cetera. So breaking down the different departments, the salary for the court was an increase of $11,000. That included a raise for the judge. We put in the budget some additional money for the assistant court clerk in order to hire someone, as Mike is leaving. Salary for police in total, including the disbanding of dispatch, resulted in an actual decrease in salaries for the police of just about $4,500. Salaries for DPW, including additional salary increases and so on, was $15,000. And then the rest of the village, except for the village board, increased salaries by $14,000. In addition to all of those salary increases, there's related benefits that are tied to those salaries, and that was an additional $51,000. We reduced the use of reserves by $89,000, putting that much more money into our rainy day fund. We'll talk about fiscal stress in a little bit. So basically, that required us to have a tax increase of, well, with this tax increase, we're earning an additional $70,000, and that basically left the balance that's within the budget of $8,200. So that's where the money flowed in from additional, that's where the money is going out to additional, and basically, it leaves us with $8,200 that's within the budget, additional pluses and minuses. For the next, yeah, there we go. So basically, here's where we break down where we're spending our money. Bill, you want to go over some of these categories again?
Sure. General government support is the office, the reserves, unallocated insurance. I don't have my budget, but we would say $1,000, one through A1990. Close the court, the board, their salaries and expenses. That's basically it. Public safety is the police department, the fire department, and building inspector, code enforcement officer. Public works. DPW, snow removal, lights, street lights.
Paving.
Paving. Paving, it's all in the garage. Economic development is economic development, but I don't think that's on there, is it?
It is.
Yeah, you added that, the culture. That includes the parks, the seniors, the historian, the youth committee, and celebrations, along with economic development.
Debt service, just covering bonds.
Is our bonds. Home and community service is garbage collection, MS4, things like that. And then undistributed are your retirements, your health insurance, life, excuse me, life insurance, dental insurance.
So these are basically liabilities that you're
I don't separate. Yeah, I can't separate. That's where all the money goes.
So no.
As you can see, public safety, general support are only 50% of the spending. And the undistributed is over 70%.
All right, next slide. Here is a trend of all of our tax increases back to 2012. On the right side, it is the average for that period of time. We've had several over the last 12 years that have been in excess of 3%. Last being just over 3% in 2021. At 2.5%, we are under the 12-year trend average. And as I've said before, the rate of inflation has been substantial, so basically what we need in order to close the budget gap. I'll go to the next slide. Again, here's something I'll make available on the website. It just kind of breaks down exactly where the expenditures and revenues are. On the revenue side, you can see
They can't, they're not getting the slides online. I don't know what I could have said to Sharon. But don't keep going, you're almost done, so don't worry about it.
Okay. Let's see, on the waterfront side, I want to go to that one. Bill, you want to talk about that one? Not really much to talk about, other than
There's not much to talk about. Our ratings, last time, it's helping us. This time, and our revenues are covering our expenses. Home and community service expenses is water, our the cost of water, running the water department. Any odd things. Undistributed is the same, health insurance, retirements, all of that, and the debt service is the same. So they're all the same in sewer, too.
Okay, so we're going to talk about the sewer percentage later in the meeting.
Yes.
So Okay, there is one change that I'm going to propose that we make before we adopt the budget, and that is to add the $25,000 that we have to pay the Old Lake County E911 Center for their services. That was mistakenly left out of the preliminary budget. There is enough money in the contingent amount to move that $25,000 from that line to the police budget, which is where that $25,000 dispatched charge is going to come out of. So that's just one change we're going to have to make before we approve the budget. So we would just, when we go to approve the budget, we would approve it as amended? That's correct.
Right, and you would do the amendment before you approve it.
Yeah, right, of course. All right, so the board members have any questions, comments, concerns?
I just want to say, I'm very happy with how this budget came out. I was worried originally when I was looking at the numbers prior to our budget workshop that we were just going to be out of line with where we had been in previous years, but I was very happy with how the board and the mayor put it together. And we really, to be quite honest, you know, we have everything in there that we need, even more than I, again, I thought we could get in there, so thank you for doing it that way. And it looks like a great budget. I don't see any issues, and it also took into account the concerns that the residents brought up at the end of the budget workshop.
Thanks, Seth. You're welcome.
The only question I have, Seth, is that under celebrations, Meg's salary is still not a separate line in the version that I have.
She's not, she would put in celebration, and separate it out of her salary. I can, I can make a line for it.
So we moved
We moved To the celebrations.
From
It's not really salaries, which is just stipend.
Stipend.
Can we create a line?
Yeah, I can put a line.
Can we do that after we approve the budget?
Why don't we just do it for the following year? Because then we probably have to amend the budget to transfer that between lines.
Yeah.
So why don't we just do that for the 2025, 2026 budget?
We can put the line in, and then during the year, you can do the amendment, we'll change it, or the transfer will change it, and it'll be there.
So once, so
Once you approve the budget, then
Once we're in that fiscal year, we can amend the budget to include
Put it out as a line.
Yes.
Anyone remaining on?
Can we bring something up?
One sec.
Okay.
Anything, anything else?
I don't have anything additional. I agree with Seth.
Okay.
You know, I think we went through it line by line.
So we'll go to public comments on the budget.
I think we should have done this prior to this meeting, I don't know. But in the past, the seniors were allowed extra money for transportation, which was taken away a few years ago. But there was also rent of ethenee that we no longer pay, which was $2,000. We lost $1,000. We were just looking to see about getting that back.
Diane and I did talk about that, yeah. And in a similar fashion, it's going to be my suggestion that we amend the budget after it's approved to add in the $2,000 towards transportation costs, since those are now escalated.
So that has to be approved?
Correct.
Is that for approval?
That's correct.
Okay.
There's also miscellaneous we get, too, so I mean, it doesn't all have to be transportation. I did talk to Molly and said that they did increase our miscellaneous, but we don't know who asked for that.
We'll take it.
We'll take it.
We make the most of it because we do a good job. A really good job.
We do.
Membership, it's based on membership, primary membership, and I'm working myself to the bone. We all have to get primary members. We feel that we have a great membership.
Thank you.
I have a suggestion before I make that, before I ask the question. I'm going to make a suggestion, and maybe you might think about changing your budget process and maybe trying to line up more with like what the school does, having multiple work sessions, and then trying to, I've worked with a lot of budgets over my whole career, and to try and go through a preliminary budget to bring up questions and answers is pretty close to impossible. And you're going to make the budget whole tonight, if I understand it right, right? After you make the budget whole tonight, there's no more questions, there's no more changes.
Well, we can amend it, yeah, there's going to be, you know, there's going to be, we can make amendments to it, yeah.
I just think it would be more open to the public if you did, I don't want to make, well, Bill's retiring, so he doesn't care now. But I don't want to make a work for somebody, but it just seems like it doesn't get enough attention from the residents because there's not enough opportunity for them to voice their opinion or to see what's going on. I mean, maybe I'm off-base, maybe I'm not.
Well, I've been coming to these budget meetings for at least the last 10 years, and there's more people in this room right now at this budget hearing than I think has been in the previous 10 years. And Mike can attest to that as somebody who's been on the board before. So I completely agree with you, and the more people that are here, I guess, you know, the challenge is there's only so many things that we can adjust, and, you know. So if you have some ideas that you'd like to include, I'm all for it. You know, it's just, we have very limited things to work with.
Part of that suggestion is that maybe you get an active community involvement in the budget. I know the school district does that with some of our, some of our people that are sitting in the audience tonight that are professionals at doing this kind of thing. I mean, you guys all have other jobs and other responsibilities, and Bill is only part-time. I'm not saying that the budget's not okay, but I'm just saying there might be a better process to streamline this thing also, too, so you guys don't have to put as much work with when you have professionals that live in this community that can help.
Thank you.
Just a suggestion. So my first question, I guess, is, or do I let somebody else?
You'll go.
My first question involves in the police department. You just talked about the 25 grand coming from somewhere else than other in the police department. Did we eliminate $135,000 because we got rid of the dispatchers? Why do we need to take 25 from contingency when we already eliminated $135,000?
But that went towards, most of that went towards the salary increase that they got in their contract.
All right, all right, so my other question is, I see in there that we're going from $83,000 in overtime last year to $95,000 projected overtime this year. When we were doing the dispatcher thing, it was stated that a lot of their overtime was because they had a dispatch. That's gone, but yet overtime is going up. It's projected to go up.
So did their hourly rate. On their pay raise, if their hourly rate went up.
And how does that translate to overtime? The overtime is going to go up that much? I mean
I don't know.
I mean, I'm guessing that half of that $83,000 last year, by the way, Ryan was talking, it was all overtime because of dispatch.
No, that was a separate line item.
That was part of the $135 last year.
Okay. All right, well, then the answer to that, all right, so let's move on to court officers.
That's when they go down to testify.
No, court officers. No, court officers, when they show up at court over there.
Oh, here you mean, oh, okay, because there's one court overtime in the police department is when they go testify. Court officers here.
It's 20 grand for the guys that go over here. Now, maybe it was a long time ago, but I used, I dispatched over here for 15 years, and they used to take an officer off the street and put him into court for a couple hours while they had court. And that was when they only had two officers on the street. Now we have three officers on the street. And my question is, as our crime
We don't have three officers on the street. There's two officers on the street. Sometimes Thursday is this one shift where there's a third officer.
So we still pulled them, they pulled officer in for a couple hours, and they did the court, and then they went and they got back in the car and went out and did their business. I'm hoping crime hasn't gotten that much worse.
It's a problem.
And I'm not trying to beat up the police department, I'm looking at it as a taxpayer.
Well, the larger problem is the court is now, instead of two hours, some of them are four or five hours. On traffic night, she has sometimes 150 people, 400.
Well, that I know because I can't get in my driveway.
Right, that's why. It's just
I'm just looking for ways to try and save money.
I know.
I mean, it was the old days when we only had two, and one would go get in the car, and if they needed them, they would leave.
Yeah.
I'm hoping crime's not getting that bad, that we can, we do do that.
Has a crime increase?
No.
The other problem is, too, is that OCA, the court administration, has changed the ruling about about security because of all people going in court and starting fights and stuff. So now that's why we have to have the number of officers. We're dictated how many people, how many officers we have to have according to OCA.
They want another officer to run the machine so that handbags have to go through the machine instead of being hand-searched by somebody. They want us to buy a machine to scan it like at the airport because they shouldn't be sticking their hands in a bag that has potentially fentanyl or needles or something else in it. And we should, so it's complicated. It's not, it's not like it used to.
It's another one of unfunded mandates.
Yeah, but the problem is, they go to court and they say, okay, your fine is $300, and then they walk out of court, and next week their fine is still $300, and we can't go after them because the state says you can't go after them to spend their license or anything else.
We can't get that money?
Well, we try. We can, but we got a lot on the books, I'll tell you.
Wow.
We're working on ways that will increase the percentage of fines that are collected. That's something that we're going to talk about tonight. But the answer is, when they stopped allowing us to suspend somebody for non-payment of multiple violations, that basically, what are we doing? We're running a court that's running up expenses for money that potentially we will never see. That's an unfunded mandate.
The only way you can suspend is if you don't show up for court.
If they show up for court, plead guilty and promise to pay, they can walk out the door and we can never see them again, as long as they show up to court.
Do we get revenue from the spheres on 787?
Yep, if our guys, yeah.
I thought Steve Police do that.
They do, but we get the revenue.
Oh, I see.
And it depends on what they put.
One other one, and then I'll shut up. Miss Lane, can you explain Miss Lane is to be?
Which one?
Anything. The ring, every single, every single code, every single
In the street, it's where I don't know where to put something, like if they buy something that doesn't have a category. Sometimes I put it in miscellaneous. Miscellaneous in the mayor's budget is for the expenses for the board and for travel and stuff. Instead of itemizing each one to make travel a line and to make travel a line and everything else, you'd have the budget instead of 80 pages, it would be 250. But, uh, it's like a catch-all account if I don't know where, if I don't have some place.
Would that pay for, when they go to trainings and so on too, Bill?
Training, well, some of them have training, but, uh.
Or conferences, etc.
Conferences and stuff, like when the board goes to night com or something, all of that goes into under the mayor. You know, I don't have a, the only thing the trustees have in salary, I mean, stuff they do goes under the mayor miscellaneous because it's an easy place to put it in. It all pertains to the board.
Oh, I'll ask you another one a few times later.
Go ahead, Paul. We got.
Oh, so I get, the other one has to do, I'm kinda direct with you. Don't take it personal. It's not personal. It's tactful, you know. Up until this, this year, we didn't have a, a stipend for events and we didn't have a stipend for an assistant. Um, so I wanted to get your input is why do we need that now?
Well, we also had a paid gardener, okay? Uh, we don't have that now. Uh, we're gonna do that more efficiently. So there's $6,000 that we used to spend. Uh, I needed somebody who officially can take my messages and my mail. The, the mayor for many years had a, a personal assistant that was paid 10,000, 12,000, $16,000?
30. That goes back to John, right?
Yeah, John and then.
Yeah, a couple of other duties too, though.
Yeah, and he had other duties, but.
Before, that doesn't happen anymore. Uh, I mean, the planning of events for 3,000, how much, what's the stipend?
3,000.
$3,000, the amount of work that goes into all of that, I, I think it's a bargain. So that's my non-personal view of that.
My, my non-personal view is that, again, it's the community. Again, there's a lot of people in the community. I mean, we used to um, well, there's a few of us in this room that were all part of what they used to call the youth committee, going back to when. And the youth committee doubled as events. They did, they did all that stuff utilized. I mean, and not, not just because it's May either, but it is anybody, but she doesn't do it all by herself. I mean, she has all these volunteers that do it anyway. Um, that make these events happen. So why not utilize the people in the village, save a couple of dollars?
Save a professional planner right on the board.
Yes, and, and so if you, if, well, because that keeps getting brought up. And that technically is against the law, section 3-300. A village elected official cannot hold another office within the village.
I don't think they need paid, cause I would never.
And I get it. It's still a paid position for reports to the mayor and no one on the board can also report to the mayor.
I'm not looking for people to get paid. I'm just looking for people to volunteer.
I, I get it. And it, it's not something that I have not considered. It's just, it's against the law.
Nope, you're not understanding, Brian. The only reason it's a paid position is because you created the position. Prior to that, it was not a position. So therefore I could have acted, and I'm not saying I would, as a committee chair to a public committee of community members who would plan these events.
The event needs one person in charge of it that reports to me as the mayor.
Because that's.
So who is in charge?
That's the way that the village, the village, I am the CEO of the village and everyone who works in the village.
I'm just telling you.
Works for the village's mayor. That's how it works.
Who was the event planner when Meg was the mayor? Who, who, who reported to me?
Meg did. Meg did that herself. Yep.
So in other words, you don't want to do.
That's correct.
Okay. Alright, well, that's, that's all I needed to know.
Amen. And that's why I, that's why I asked, who would be interested in doing that?
Who did you ask? It wasn't public knowledge.
The, the mayor can make those appointments. I did and the board approved them. There was no, there was no objection.
And the, the only other thing is the $5,000 stipend for the part-time clerk is in next year's budget. I know Tim had asked something about it when you were talking about it. It was just supposed to be to the end of this fiscal year, if I, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, well, it's not $5,000 for this year. It's, it's an amount that, that's gonna be spread out through the salary through the year. Yeah, and it will go into next year.
Not through the fiscal year, through the calendar year.
Through the ca, through the, well, I mean.
Through the fiscal year.
The, the, the amount.
June events.
Yeah. So, yeah, it goes out through the, that's the calendar, that's fiscal year, yeah.
Fiscal year, June events. So June 1st is the following month.
I'm really done.
That is the clarification I needed as well. So, yeah, you, I, I get your question. Yeah.
Go ahead, Bill.
Alright. Well, since you guys have worked on the budget, you've done a good job and I think the budget is fair, honest and reasonable.
Thank you.
And now, now I do, now I have, now I'd like to suggest in addition to the fines from the courts, I'd like to suggest surcharges.
There are surcharges and they all go to the state of New York.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. I wish the state would share some of the surcharges with local governments, including the village manants.
Couldn't agree more.
Now, what about property taxes? Are they gonna be raising the village manants or no?
Yes, 2.51%.
That's not nowhere as bad as the village of Scotia. They're raising it by 9%.
Exactly.
And the reason, one of the reasons, because they're almost done with their new firehouse, what the village has been needing so badly. And they're gonna renovate that building where the firehouse has been and convert it to other village offices. Is, is the firehouse gonna be renovated, this one? I know they had air conditioning for it.
We've got some renovations that are built into the budget that we're talking about.
Well, like I say, I do support the bu, budget largely.
Thanks, Bill.
You're welcome.
Mike done.
Two questions. What, can you, at the very beginning of your presentation, you talked about fines and the court. Can you just go to it one more time?
Uh, what, was it on one of my slides?
Yeah, uh, yeah, basically is, we collect so much money. We do collect money for the court. And this year was higher than anticipated, so I added a little more to the budget. They seem to be getting more collections in, but last I heard it was over $400,000 out there. It would be nice to get.
So even.
You didn't say that you would increase the court, the fines.
Correct.
No, no, it's just the amount of money we're gonna collect.
Increasing the percentage of people who actually pay the fines that are levied.
Next question. The, why did you just amend, fix the budget now versus doing amendment, amendment after the?
Because then it has to go right back to a hearing. It has to be republished and a new hearing has to be had.
Oh, boy. That's all.
So, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but as long as the, the current budget is the budget, unless there's an amendment to it.
Right.
Right.
And on June 1st, the budget takes over and you can amend anything after that. Uh, but if you amend it now, you decide to amend the current budget, you can amend it, then we have to have another public hearing for this coming budget. And it has to be before the end of the month of April, and they have to vote on it and prove it. If they don't, then the preliminary budget becomes the budget for next year. And down that road a couple of times.
My last comment is, I understand, this may not be the place to say it, but this is Bill's last budget. I just wanna thank him.
Yeah.
You're welcome to work that over the years.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome to come back for any future budgets.
Oh, thanks, anyway. And I'll take 28 out of the 20.
30 is a nice even number.
Yeah, so 28.
It divides evenly.
Chuck, go ahead.
Okay, so, you know, there's a lot of page, obviously, an 85-page budget. Uh, you know, I did have a chance to run through it. I've kinda got a summary of some points here that I'd like to submit.
Sure.
You know, just kinda bullet points here in terms of, uh, some, some of the things that I noticed. Um, on the revenue side of things, uh, it did look like it might be a bit optimistic. You explained why it should be optimistic, would be additional revenue coming in from one Broadway and I guess, I, I just wanna be, I, I just wonder if there's a contingency plan if these numbers don't roll in as anticipated. Is it something just gets handled on an ad hoc basis? Or is there, hey, if, you know, if we only hit 90% of projections, then this 10% differential is going to be, uh, reduced here?
So the answer to your question in short is yes. The difference that we applied from reserves from last year to this year was reduced by $89,700. So that $89,700 is in our reserve account should we need any of that to plug into the budget in order to make it balance.
Okay. And that was another question I had. Is there adequate reserves?
So adequate is a relative term, but if you ask every controller in the state of New York, they'll give you a different answer. Uh, the, the short of it is 10%, 15%?
I like 10s. Uh, the controller says, what is reasonable? You can have reserves that are reasonable.
That's how, but there's also a limit, though.
There's, it's not, people say it's reasonable. If you got way too much, he's gonna holler at you. Say, well, you should spend more.
So.
Or lower your taxes, but, um, yeah, he doesn't. He's come out and said, no, whatever's reasonable. And reasonable is up to you guys, the board.
We were trending to a lower rollover amount, uh, for several years. And then with COVID, it became more challenging. We didn't wanna burden, uh, with high increases, uh, during COVID. And so that increased, that, that rollover amount to plug into the budget increased for the last two years. This year, we're reversing that trend and actually lowering it by a, a good, a good amount in order to get back to where we were.
Okay. I think just to give you a personal note.
What's that?
Governor Cuomo did nobody a favor by limiting everything to 2% of your tax revenue. Because this year, we stayed under 2, or stayed at the 2%. We would have been allowed $59,000 in expenses to spend across the whole budget. That's not enough money here.
I noticed a pretty sizable increase in administrative costs. I guess that that may have been covered here, uh, already. Um, the one thing Billy just mentioned, it's an 85-page budget. There's a lot of miscellaneous stuff in there. And my concern is this, and he said it would be 250 pages. I know you may have been embellishing that a little bit, but I'm not so sure that there shouldn't be more pages, if that's what it takes to get the proper number of general ledger accounts on here. Because my concern, I think, is this, how, what are the performance metrics moving forward and what steps are being taken? Uh, you know, to make sure that these objectives are met. And if you have a proper number of general ledger accounts, you're ea, it's, it's easier to track these kinds of things. And, you know, so next year, instead of miscellaneous, if miscellaneous goes over a thou, you know, $20,000, again, you know, that may be just rhetorical, but, uh, where, you can't track it, you know, if you know that it's, uh, gasoline for a police car, which I'm sure is already budgeted. Anyways, I'm just, I just wanna make sure, I'm not, I don't want you to be overly granular on this, but if there's opportunities here, that may be something to, uh, to explore.
Work on the new accounting system and that's a challenge in itself.
So I'm, I, I don't doubt.
I'm working on it, because I didn't like the way the budget looks.
Yeah.
I don't like the way it looks. Like there's extra lines in there, totals that we don't need.
Right. And it's a bear to go through.
It is.
Um, and just to reiterate what Paul was saying here, as far as transparency and citizen engagement, again, I know that we've got more engagement going on now than we have in the past. I don't know what it takes to get people more involved. I know that people, I, I, I'm sure that there's plenty of people sitting on their asses at home tonight that are gonna be mad about this and not, you know, doing their thing to make sure that money gets spent the way it is. And I also look at this coming from, again, the private sector background and, you know, $3,000 here for a coordinator, $8,000 there for a bus that only services 30 or 40 kids. You know, it's, all this stuff adds up. So again, and, and again, I, I don't wanna make this personal and this thing keeps coming back with coordinator. But this is something that in the past, I was on the park committee. When we rebuilt the park down here, we didn't pay a coordinator to figure out how to rebuild the park. There was a committee filled with citizens. We've got people in this room that are citizens on the budget committee for the school. I just think that there are certain things in the village that people would enjoy getting involved in. And the more people that you have involved in deciding which bands are gonna play or, you know, which food trucks are gonna come. I think that this is something that there would be a lot of community engagement and, and it would be, create a better morale, if you will, for the community because you have more people involved and save a couple grand. Again, 3,000 bucks isn't gonna break the bank, you know, e, everybody knows that, but yeah, every little bit helps. So that's, that's kinda my take on, on that. So I guess should I give this to John?
I, I, you know, from my perspective, just to say, I, I'm, you know, my hope at least that with this new, you know, uh, software that we purchased and, you know, that in the long run, that'll help us do a little more granular breakdown that you're talking about and follow, you know, a little bit better, you know, wh, what's specific spots that the money's coming from and where we need to look down the road and, oh, you know, and so on. So that's, that's kinda my hope as well. And I'm hoping that's what this does for us. You know, which we really, you know, it's unfortunate, but right now, right in the middle. So here we are with the new software and this, this whole thing going on and Phil's getting ready to retire and you know, Nicole's, Nicole's, Nicole's left and, you know, so we have a lot of institutional knowledge that's going out the door. So, you know.
I think, yeah, I know this putting us together, but it isn't easy. I mean, I've done it for 40 years across different companies and, yeah, a little bit municipal stuff along the way too, just being involved with. So I know it's not easy.
Go ahead.
People are so happy and satisfied here. They don't need to come to a meeting and.
That's right. Is this recorded?
They're comfy, they don't wanna watch TV. They're happy as a worm. So that's the problem.
Until you tell them.
I can't get people to come up senior citizens. So I mean, what, so what, as I say, they just wanna play cards. They wanna go on bus rides. So I take them on bus rides, but I gotta get the money to take the bus. So that's what I'm trying to do to help them. But people are satisfied here. They're comfy. This is a great neighborhood. They don't have any really objections to, uh, anything. I think you're doing a great job. You're all doing a great job and everybody's happy. Except if you can put that light on on Villa Road. The light is missing on Villa Road. It's causing an awful aqua uproar for some people. But he was supposed to be here this morning. At, there, tonight, that's why I'm here. But I'm doing the budget instead of watching. That's where I should be, I guess.
Do those filters get ordered for the lights or whatever? Shields? Shields, that's the word.
They're all up. Everybody that wanted a shield, they're all up.
If they, they can do, they can do more than that, you know.
Still get them. They need more of this. No, no one else is complaining. We're all done complaining.
This is just an observation. Um, having, having like many people in the room worked on budgets, one of the, um, one of the key factors that I felt was missing in the and the presentations that the department has made to you, um, on the board was revenue, uh, possible revenue and enhancement, if you will. Sources of, sources of funds to offset the expenses that they feel are essential to their, um, to their operation. And, um, so if, if there's a, if there's a possibility to, um, to incorporate that as a as a requirement of budget managers, I think it would be worthwhile. Um, the, the other, the other factor is that, um, there are, there are agreements that, um, the village uh, enters into that have a huge impact on, on the budget. And, um, and I'm speaking, um, primarily of, of union agreements that have, they, 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 they cost money. And that, that process appear, appears from my perspective to be, um, to be on the. to be on the, on the non-public side. It, it isn't something that comes before, um, the taxpayers. And, and yet it impacts us dramatically. And so I, I would, would ask that um, some consideration be, be made, um, to, uh, to include more transparency in those kinds of areas.
Agreed. The next, the next, uh, uh, for both the PBA and Teamsters is, is three, three, uh, let's see.
One's three, one's three, and one's four.
Twenty-six, I think there's one.
So, yeah, we'll figure that out. Anyone else?
Just, um, wanna, uh, point out, uh, in the, uh, for the sake of transparency, um, I have to say, this is, this is my eleventh budget. I'm nowhere near, uh, bill. But what I do have to say is this has been the most transparent budget, uh, in, um, my eleven years on the board. Um, this is the first time that we've allowed public comment at the workshop. Uh, and I was, I was worried that that would make it go, go long, and we really didn't have a budget yet, it was just preliminary budget. Um, just the, the ideas, but we, we listened to what people had to say and took that into account. And I think that that actually streamlined how the, the budget appeared. Everything that, that people said in this room for that, uh, the mayor took into account. And, uh, he sent us a long email of adjustments that he made to the preliminary budget. And he was able to reduce it down to a very manageable two and a half percent increase. That was, I, I was actually, um, really shocked and pleasantly surprised at, uh, how he was able to do that. And I thought that was nice that he addressed people's concerns as well as going forward, how we would operate, uh, in the future to do that. So I want to commend the mayor for that. So, thank you. And I think that here are things on, on this end. We haven't voted for it yet, so I'll make sure. But anyway, thank you for, for having it that way, and, um, uh, hopefully that'll continue to.
Appreciate it very much.
My pleasure.
That's better. Okay, we're gonna close the budget hearing?
Six fifty-two.
Okay. Uh, all right, regular meeting. We need the, uh, a motion to approve the minutes. I did amend a couple things, so as amended.
I move to approve the, uh, the minutes of the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting as amended.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Part number twenty X, thirty-six thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars forty-seven cents. Warrant number twenty-one, general, forty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars fifty-one cents. Water, seventy-seven thousand one hundred and one thou, one hundred and one ninety cents. Sewer, one hundred and fifty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars forty-one cents, totally. Two hundred and seventy-four thousand eight hundred and fifteen eighty-two. Payroll number twenty-two, one hundred and ten thousand five hundred and nine dollars fifty cents.
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed?
We need a resolution to, uh, transfer sixty thousand three hundred dollars from the ARPA savings account into the general checking account to cover the cost of the spring broke accounting system.
Make a.
That covers all the expenses to date?
To date.
Does that include the maintenance fee?
Uh, no, I withheld the maintenance.
Got it, okay, fair enough. Sorry, go ahead.
It's all right. Make a resolution to authorize the treasurer to transfer sixty thousand three hundred dollars from ARPA savings to A zero 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 dot zero two zero zero general checking, and to amend the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four village budget. Count A one, uh, dot one three two five dot zero two zero one, computer and software by sixty thousand three hundred dollars, which is the cost of the new software.
All those in favor?
We need a resolution for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five primary budget moving to twenty-five thousand from the contingency account to.
Police Department.
Police Department.
For Albany County.
When I gotta change the titles and everything, I don't want.
It's, it says Albany County, can we say? Albany County Dispatch.
Dispatch.
Sure. Make that clear?
Yeah, and that will be, uh, basically taking over the radio line. There's a line that we've never used for, that says radio. It seemed appropriate.
We did it once, years ago, and then we just never got rid of it.
Okay, I'll make the motion to move the, uh, twenty-five thousand, uh, account A one nine nine zero point zero four zero zero contingent account to A point three one two zero point zero two one three, uh, services from the Albany County Dispatch Service.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Okay.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Village of Manans budget.
As amended?
As amended.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
Okay. You want to talk about sewer rates?
Uh, so we've been talking about, uh, the need for an adjustment, uh, and a sewer rate. It, we reduced it from fifty percent to forty-five percent when we. Went forty percent.
We went from fifty to forty percent, and then a couple years later, we went back up to forty-five. Uh, or every, everybody was here when they had the discussion, but, uh, Albany County Sewer is in the process of doing two hundred million dollars worth of renovations. And they're gonna have to borrow money for that, et cetera, and that all comes to all the communities to use. They just separated by percentages and say, okay, your bill is now this. That one, uh, sewer on the, uh, amount of money, he read, a hundred and twenty-four thousand, that was six months worth of sewer bill to the Village of Manans. For them to process our sewer and pay for their infrastructure and everything else. And that's gonna go up in the next five years, guaranteed. If they're doing two hundred million dollars worth of work, they're gonna increase everybody's. I, did they, did they provide any figures of what they expect that to cost each municipality?
So when I met with Angelo, the, the executive director, uh, he said that Albany County's model will be more like Rensselaer County's model, which is, instead of fifty percent of water, two hundred percent of water. So in Troy, for instance, I pay two hundred percent of water for sewer. I pay the city a sewer rate of a hundred percent of water, and I pay the county.
That really doesn't even make any sense, because how can you be charged this much for the, for the water?
So water's four dollars per thousand, and sewer is over eight dollars per thousand.
But it's, it couldn't be more than, you couldn't put more water down your drain, if you're thinking.
Doesn't make any sense.
I get it, but.
You know, Troy's like, Troy's like water, really, everybody else. They have combined sewer flows, and they have to separate them. Their sanitary sewer goes into their storm sewers, and it goes into the Hudson. So they have to change all of that. And, believe me, it's not cheap to dig up and put in a sewer line.
Right, because then you gotta connect everybody. Right.
So instead of.
Then you gotta fix the road.
Instead of doing massive increase when the bill comes, and they say, okay, you're now more like Troy than you've had been. Uh, my suggestion is that we increment, we make the sewer rate fifty percent of water. That makes the math easy.
So minimum bill right now is about what, one eighty?
Just on the.
So, so five percent increase would be, would not tell.
Right now, the minimum charge for water is two thirty-seven thirty, and the sewer is one oh six seventy-nine. If you increase it by five percent, it'll be one eighteen sixty-five. And your total water sewer bill will be three fifty-five ninety-five every six months, which.
So what's the additional for five percent? I just want that part, Steve.
So about twelve bucks?
Twelve bucks. Twenty-four dollars a year.
But if you do the yearly thing, you pay for water and sewer approximately a dollar ninety-eight.
Sorry. All right, so, so that's, so what, what do we estimate the additional revenue of, for sewer expenses? So that would be?
You would just.
Oh, yeah.
What was the additional revenue that we would earn by, what would be additional? Wasn't it like forty-seven?
Yeah, something like that.
But we could also be using portions to the work we're gonna be doing, right?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna use.
Correct.
Yeah, like when.
Yes, this is gonna help.
Finally start the South End.
Right, for example, yeah.
For example, when those bills come in, we'll be able to pay them, and when the bonds come in, we'll be able to use this money to offset the bond payment in sewer.
Because sewer can only be used for sewer, or.
Sewer can only be used for sewer. State says, that's all you can do with that. Um, so, what you have to do now is you have to have a public hearing.
So I, I move that we hold a public hearing, uh, at the, uh, board meeting on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four at six o'clock PM for the purpose of raising the sewer rate to fifty percent.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi. Uh, Tim, did you meet the people of New York Class?
Did New York?
When we were at NICOM?
I did, yeah.
Uh, N, New York Class is an investment firm that works with municipalities, uh, to basically manage cash. They pay way more than we earn with KeyBank for cash. Uh, so allowing us the ability to park our money there and earn five percent currently.
I think it's five percent.
Uh, it's all kept in government securities and other, uh, similar, similar, uh, cash-based investment vehicles, uh, the.
Ten years, just take it in and put it out, no penalty.
The school is actually who recommended, uh, them to us, even though we've heard about them a number of times. We didn't know somebody so close was also a, uh, a client of theirs, so, and they seem to earn a good amount of money. So just to give you an example, the amount of money that we have could potentially earn us an additional twenty thousand dollars a year, uh, to help.
An income.
An income. Uh, so versus what we've been earning on some of our cash accounts at KeyBank, so.
So we've been taking everything out of KeyBank?
No.
Oh, okay.
Again, the, the board would make those decisions, I think, uh, uh, when we, you know, allocate certain amounts of money uh, to them. Just want to make it an option that we have available to us. So, uh, I would like to suggest that we enter into an agreement with New York Class. Uh, and we need to, uh, read the, uh, basically the resolution that all municipalities must enter into the record.
I'll go. So, um, I'll offer the resolution, whereas New York General Municipal Law, Article, uh, five G, Section one nineteen dash O, um, empowers municipal corporations to bind, uh, Article five G, Section one, uh, one nineteen dash N, uh, to include school districts, board of, uh, boards of cooperative educational services, counties, cities, towns, and villages and districts to enter into amend, cancel, and terminate agreements for the performance amongst themselves or one or the other of their respective functions, uh, powers and duties on a cooperative or, uh, contract basis. Whereas the Village of Manans wishes to invest portions of its available investment funds in cooperation with other corporations and/or districts pursuant to the night class, um, uh, municipal cooperation agreement amended and restarted as of April first, twenty twenty-four. Whereas the Village of Manans wishes to assure the safety and liquidity, uh, needs of their funds. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved as follows, that Mayor, um, Brian Marsh, uh, Mayor of the Village of Manans is hereby authorized to participate in the night class, uh, program under the terms of the night class municipal agreement amended and restarted as of April first, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor? We have been talking about potentially renovating the Ganser Smith Park bathrooms for a number of years. Uh, as it turns out, Tony LaFari and a group of volunteers have, uh, have decided to take that on as a volunteer basis. We only have to pay for materials. The cost is approximately twenty thousand dollars so far. Um, I would like to ask, this is all coming out of money that we got through a SAM grant through Phil Steck's office. Uh, Phil Steck's office has amended it to not be specific to bathrooms, but just be bathrooms and improvements to Ganser Smith Park. So there'll be a couple of other things that we can talk about, potentially adding to the park trash cans and some additional benches, and some, some other things that we can use the additional monies for. Uh, so I would like to see if the board would, uh, approve up to thirty thousand dollars in expenses uh, for the renovations to the bathroom and other, uh, improvements at Ganser Smith Park, which may, or may not, depending on the number, include a new scoreboard. Uh, right now, I think they're, did they start on the, the, uh?
At lower.
Okay, but did they do the baseball field today?
I don't know, they, they were supposed to.
No. All right, uh, they should be starting that any day now, uh, and.
Won't be this week.
Huh?
Won't be this.
I know, uh, that, we had that problem last week, too.
I know.
Uh, so if someone would make a motion to.
Happy to make a motion?
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Um, what, last year or this year, um, the Police Department got new cameras for the police cars that are also plate readers, so they don't longer need the plate reader readers that are on the cars. Um, Chief Sainte-Lace is asking permission to surplus those and to sell them to East Green Bush Police for four thousand dollars. That way we can turn out to sitting on a shelf and get some money back for, for the ones that we already purchased.
I'll make a motion to surplus.
Second. All those in favor?
All right.
Now I need a motion to approve to allow Chief Sainte-Lace to purchase, to sell them to East Green Bush for four thousand dollars.
I move to sell the plate readers to East Green Bush Police Department for four thousand dollars?
Second. All those in favor?
All right.
Uh, April is Donate Life Month, which is a celebration of organ donors and those who live uh, from the gift of organ donation. Uh, I'm an organ donor, so uh, I encourage everyone who wants to be an organ donor to be one. You never know how many people you might save should something happen. Um, oh, God help whoever gets my liver. It's, uh, uh, we're gonna do a raising of the Donate Life flag, uh, at, here?
Here and.
Here and at.
North Channel thirteen.
Uh, in front of Channel thirteen. Uh, they just rescheduled it, uh, to the eleventh at ten AM. I think, I don't know which one we're gonna be at at ten AM. I think we're gonna do Channel thirteen first. So if anyone can make that, that, um, the executive director of the organ donation team is.
Will be there?
Will be there.
Yeah, we're gonna, it was because of this.
We are shitty cops.
Not with them.
Um, I think that's all I have.
But that's all you have, you're only.
Tim is gonna talk about.
Oh, hey, yes. Um, so, uh, as you know, we're gonna be doing Earth Day, the Manan School, the PTA, and the Manan Public Library are, uh, joined together to, uh, host at the Ganser Smith Park on, on April twenty-first at one PM. We're gonna, you know, get everybody together to begin the Earth Day cleanup on that Sunday afternoon, rain or shine. So, uh, we just, uh, we will have something in the next activities to let everybody know the details. But, uh, we had a great.
But uh, we had a great turnout last year, and I was amazed by the number of people that showed up. If we could do that while we've been close to it this year, it'll go great, because everybody did a great job last year. It was wonderful. Um, so I just, you know, I just wanted to mention that. Uh, I have one more thing. So I've been talking a long time about my desire to get solar around the village and I and uh, also at N I com, I talked to some gentlemen from the New York Power Authority who have a program for that. I've had a Zoom meeting for them today, and unfortunately, as you learned, they they reported the same to me that we don't have enough square footage and area to do, you know, uh, you know, solar panels that will, that. What they do is they, Herman, if you've got enough property or, you know, uh, square footage to 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 produce one megawatt, and we just don't have that. They said they'd need three or four acres literally at surface area, so they're looking for big projects, because what they do is they put out an R P to get a developer who wants to come in and do it. And because they earn money from that. Uh, and, uh, you know, unfortunately, we don't have that right now. Although they're still still, I still haven't like all the idea entirely, there's still other opportunities down there, so. We're gonna smoke things. Uh, and we continue to work, Seth and I are continuing to work on the the little River Greenway, you know, project and and uh, let's be, went well, I picked up D two of the properties that uh for the orders that are down there. And uh, there's some big properties down there, you know, there's so, you know, we're gonna have to look at that and see what kind of access we can we can get. We own a bit, yeah, but there's some other ones.
Yes, we need to get through to get to.
Yeah, we need to get to it.
Yeah.
You know, clear and easy, yeah.
We're working on it.
We're working on it. I haven't heard back yet, he was off today.
Oh, uh, okay.
Ron will get back to me about private road seat, which is the road in the US.
Basically dirt road, paper road.
Yeah, so private road seat, not a tax map, private road.
Yeah, I know, yeah, it's all.
It's a dirt road, but, you know, the other thing is on that road, Albany County meter is for us.
During the for the sewer district.
Yeah, but it's our, it takes all of our sewer.
Right, that's the, that's the main truck.
Into their main truck.
Okay. And charging.
That's a whole other, that's a whole other ball of.
Exactly. So our road is just an even through?
Uh, I'm not even sure it's ours.
It's, that's what we're trying to find, that's what we're trying to find out.
Trying to find out who owns it, it says Hudson River Estates.
Oh.
And God knows, I don't know who Hudson River Estates is, because they're long gone. I think they used to be the railroads, but.
Have to exhume some guys like Sammy Moore or Clyde to be able to tell you.
Yeah, right. Well, Clyde never wrote anything down anyway.
Neither been saying.
Yeah, well, I looked out security by him.
Yep.
Uh, so with the um, the new pickleball club uh on the verge of opening and how highly used uh, the pickleball court is at Ganzer Smith Park, um, apparently we've attracted some attention in the pickleball world. Uh, because, uh, I guess a resident on on Sage Hill who is well-connected somehow uh put, uh, it was that resident and John Kinnick that apparently gave my uh contact information to um, someone in the pickleball world who introduced herself as the Big Dill. Uh, and uh, her name is Angela Heath, she inquired about a tournament uh next spring. It would uh, it would conflict with the basketball tournament in uh Binghamton uh scheduled for next year, but we think that this will actually take more attention than that. Um, anyway, they're talking about completely retrofitting uh Switzer Park with uh temporary pickleball courts of plastic and rubber over that temporary fencing, gonna be broadcast on ESPN. Uh, they're looking at celebrities like Roger Federer, Martina Hingis, Andre Agassi, Charles Barkley, Michelle Obama. It's gonna be called the Vlasic Open, uh, and uh, it should be, it should be a wonderful event. So I look forward to all eyes of the world being on Manans.
Any dates on that?
Was that?
Do you have any dates on that?
Uh, I think we're looking at um, uh, March thirty-second of twenty twenty-five.
April fourth. I don't wanna mix it up with one of my date, with one of my trips.
Well, uh, I'll make sure, I'll make sure that's on the the calendar. Yes, so yeah, March thirty-second.
I did, I was, I was ready.
That's the key to a good dad joke is you have to get people really going, you have to get them believing all of that. You don't believe me, uh, see me after and I'll tell you the story of Kickbooth Street.
Uh, public comment, go ahead, Phil.
Couple things. Now, since the Manans Little League Baseball Organization will get a ball field upgrade by which I support the second T-ball field area, I wish to propose one small bleaker seat area plus pay for the second T-ball area, field area with voluntary money donations, private funding that sells surplus baseball items and state and federal for money grants. I'm sorry, another thing. Now, since I still largely favor our village to have four electric charging stations in various parts of our village, I'd like to know where in the village of Manans were those four electric vehicle stations gonna be located, you know?
So initially, we had talked about two at the park and two at village, uh, the village office. Uh, and uh.
Cause there's already one near Generon.
Uh, so that's owned by C D T A.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't know.
Yeah.
Uh, will will we get any state money grants for building four electric charging stations or no?
We got the grant.
How much?
Thirty-two, two, thirty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, and they just recently released the guidance on specs for doing it, which is what, two years plus in the making?
Well, just.
Yeah, we've been waiting a while, yeah, the grant.
Just so you know, I largely do support the four charging, electric charging station. And I'd like to request that our public works guys kindly post one new dead-end sign with its own sign post on south side of East Kemar Road and plus remove the old dead-end sign from the one utility pool on south side of East Kemar Road. And I, now, why are they supposed to put a new dead-end sign at the east end of East Kemar Road? Because that's been missing, you know, since late last year. They said they were working. What's that?
I'll, I'll double check.
All right, I would appreciate it. Thanks. Now, I'm still concerned about twelve steel high vulture towers on Broadway and Canal Street still remain in poor condition. Although, while it's true the village has got little control over steel high vulture towers, however, I've been requesting that our village board please pass and enforce a village law requiring National Grid Utility Company to correct poor condition, those twelve steel high vulture towers. If they, if they can't be done, then they should need, they should replace them with new twelve aluminum high vulture towers. I did told, I called National Grid four times about it, and they said they're gonna do something, but unfortunately, little or nothing's been done to correct the poor conditions, those twelve steel high vulture, and I'm still frustrated about it. Now, I'm ready to serve as the official groundskeeper from Manans Little League Baseball Organization during the twenty twenty twenty-four baseball season, which I'm looking forward to. But because of my health problems, unfortunately, I'm gonna only be able to do it for a limited number of times. So I'll try to do it maybe two times during this year. Now, depending, or three times, depending with my health progress. I'm sorry about it, and I feel bad of not being able to often do it, but um, but my health comes first. And while driving on Broadway here in Manans, I also observed one metal street light marker, number eleven, which is colored green on west side of Broadway near Palmer Auto Sales Dealer is not being lighted up during nighttime. I I reported that to the Manans Police Department and Don Hanhead. And another, I observed one traffic light signal system next to no one, no right turn with red sign saying on Broadway, like on Broadway and Manan Road Junction is not working now. So I already reported that to Manans Police Department as well as to Don Hanhead, and I wish the state would fix it. Now, now, Rarole Avenue, that sign that's on at the west end of Tillin Gas Avenue and the beginning of Station Street, that sign to say in Rarole's Avenue, it's still there?
Mike, Mike, Mike ordered a new scientist as a community.
And of course, by, and I, and today, I just already began picking up litter, so I already covered seven streets. So I'm just gonna try to do it once a week, depending with the weather conditions and the conditions everywhere.
Appreciate that, Tim.
And I'm all them speaking, thank you for letting me speak on important topics.
Thanks, Phil.
You're welcome.
When I saw the plate reader coming up for surplus, it got me thinking of private city, can I add to Tim? Couple of weeks ago about the concern that Broadway is a corridor of crime between Albany and Troy. And uh, something that the police department is sensitive to. Is there a plate reader that can be used pretty much on an ongoing basis? That could be mounted to one of these poles out here to keep track of those things?
So a while back, we did talk about having stationary plate readers. The problem is, by the time the plate is read, reported, and the officer travels from wherever they are, that car is gone.
Yeah, that was a question I had, whether it could be practical or not. I I didn't know if it was being used elsewhere, if there was a way that, you know, it was practical.
The city of Albany uses them at the at the stoplights, that's, you know, that I, they have a couple of them, and I, you know, they do read the plates, I I don't.
Only has one on Central Avenue, when they just, what the, what they do it for is if they're looking for a vehicle, they'll read, go back and read, yeah, the vehicle was this was here at three o'clock.
Well, that's what I was thinking, you could establish a pattern. So if you've got, you know, a bad guy that comes through here every day at three fifteen in the afternoon, then you're gonna have a cop waiting for him.
So the the new camera system that we're upgrading with C D T A will help with some of that, being able to go back and identify. And I think that's.
The problem with the stationary plate readers is the cost of them, it's like, it's like sixty to seventy thousand dollars just for one reader. And you need, you need two of them to go both directions.
And then you stop and think about that guy that got flushed out here with all the weapons, right? Yeah, it's the worst sixty grand to catch one of those guys. Yeah.
Any else?
Yeah, that's it for me.
Cindy?
Yes, I know Earth Day is coming, and we can't rely totally on the volunteers, but my daughter runs every day, well, not every day, but each week between Sonoco and the uh Stewarts. In the amount of glass on the roads, like empty bottles, like alcohol bottles and that sort of thing and trash.
Glass, you're gonna, glass, glass, yeah.
Glass, glass, yeah.
With the just cylinder bottles out the window.
There's a lot of bottles, there's a, there's a lot of garbage. I know this time of year always is more noticeable.
Yeah, doing this, you know, this is garbage and so on, but, you know, thirty-two is a state road as as well as Van Rensselaer Boulevard. I I wouldn't want to be have people going up the road.
That's a good point, yeah, I don't know.
I I know exactly what you're saying. I remember, as a matter of fact, doing it one time with one of the volunteers, we were, she, she, that we were by one of the light poles, and the panel was off the side, and she saw some garbage inside of. And she reached her hand, I said, don't do that, just she reached her hand and it app something, and there was a big giant, ooh, you know, uh, shock, and she got a little bit of a shock, but she was extremely lucky, I think, because she jumped back quick enough, but yes. So, you know, a kid, you get, people gotta be careful doing this stuff.
And the state goes down there with road creepers.
Yeah, they, you know, the state is responsible for doing it.
Once a month, I mean, I wouldn't want anybody going into the street.
Do they get onto the sidewalks where a lot of it is?
No.
What do we do about that?
If, well, that's kind of the thing, i- i- the end every winter, and we haven't had that much snow this year, but there's always a ton of debris that accumulates in the snow banks that when the snow melts, it's sitting there for us.
And just looks dead, it's bad.
I I, you know, I haven't done my survey yet on where the bad spots are, but if if she, if you guys have a list, that she sees certain spots that she thinks we need to hit, I have to put together a list, you know.
But I don't want the kids or the volunteers uh touching.
Not on the street, but if it's not to do the glass, but if she sees other spots like just kind of garbage and debris.
I'll keep that in mind, I just didn't know what our game plan is.
So Van Rensselaer is as uh, has been adopted by Hoffman's Companies, Hoffman's Car Wash.
That's Van Rensselaer, right?
Yeah, Van Rensselaer, Broadway.
Broadway.
Broadway, uh, I have tried to talk with John Casella, who runs Casella Waste, who has a transfer station down on Simmons Lane now. Seems to me they're a good contributors to some of the litter problem that ends up on Broadway with the trucks coming and going every day. So convincing them to adopt Broadway, I think, might be in their best interests as a public relations situation. They recently, they recently uh picked up around their distribution or their um transfer station uh on Simmons. Uh, but i- i- if it's not an adopt a highway, Route thirty-two would be, so they can get their name out there uh, to publicly make a statement, I think it would be appropriate. So it's a conversation that that I continue to have.
Yeah, yeah, this makes sense.
Yes.
Isn't there somebody hired to do that? Isn't that somebody's job to clean the streets in the Department of Transportation? I mean, I think they clean the highways. Don't they have very big black bags?
Sidewalk is where it is, that's where she's seeing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like no man's land.
Yeah, it's brushed too far.
Well, whose property is it on? Who's, who's sidewalk is it?
It's a states, it's a states, here's the problem, it's a state, state-owned sidewalk, but they don't maintain it. The vill- the village has to maintain.
We have to.
Oh, well, there you go. Sounds about right. Somebody's job.
So the machine, a a a machine that could go on the sidewalks that has multiple attachments, that does things like that, including plowing the snow, is about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that's some basic attachments.
All right, we we had one years ago, and uh, we had it for several seasons and and, but they kept, they kept breaking. They would, they would tip rebar or some kind of junk that was left on the sidewalk, and it was, it was crazy.
To replace, to replace the machine that we have that that uh, that plows i- is a hundred and thirty thousand now. And so we're gonna spend some money and overhaul the entire machine so that we don't have to go out and spend a new one this summer. It's, it's, it's gonna get all new parts.
Well, sometimes I think you have some, somebody shovel sidewalks and everything to clean it up, but if somebody fell on glass and there would be a soot, so that would be something that would be, I think it's worth it, not four hundred thousand dollars, but you could pay somebody to sweep the street up a little bit. I mean, one of these guys that, and I, I'm not belittling Department of Public Works, believe me, but maybe somebody's got some extra time, they could sweep up the sidewalk a little bit, you know what I'm saying? They're getting paid a salary, maybe they, just a suggestion. But I don't think it would take a four hundred thousand dollar machine to clean this little sidewalk, to get the glass off the sidewalks. Especially if you see a mess there, you could report it and they could go down and sweep it up. You know what I'm saying? Easy peasy.
I know, do that.
Thank you, Diane, yeah, well, then we'll roll into that.
I mean, I think it is important, because if somebody was to fall and have a soot, it would be something.
Well, Brett, Brett had a, got a flat tire, not on the sidewalk, but on the connector to the bike path. Uh, she got a flat tire from a glass there, and uh, so.
And the other issue is walking dogs.
Right.
You got dogs in there.
Get it, walk, walk. Yeah, so we'll see what we can, we'll see what we can come up with. Yeah, we're on the same page, thank you for bringing that up, Cindy.
You know, we're doing about it.
No, no, but we're, we're gonna, we're, I'm gonna, we're, we're gonna look into that. Yeah.
Anyone else?
Hi, Courtney, Jess, well, um, just a couple people mentioned volunteers, saying whenever wants to volunteer in a village, the P T A, Manans School P T A is always looking for volunteers. Take your time, take your expertise, take your energy, we're always trying to throw fun events for the kids. Um, as Tim mentioned, we're partnering for this spring event. Um, we have mom, one mom so far that volunteered to do a composting worms project, so I apologize in advance if any of your kids or grandkids come with worms. Um, but if anyone else wants to do an activity or craft, um, you can get in touch with us through our webpage, Manans School P T A. And uh, yeah, we'll take, we'll take whatever hope we can get.
Thanks. Anyone else? We have uh, one matter for executive session.
Personnel matter. I move that we enter executive session to discuss the personnel matter.
All those in favor?
Basketball.
Right. Right.
Well, thank you, Dan.
Good.
Very much, Dan.
I'll see you there.
All right.